Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 24th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. I officially call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Just in time for introduction, so we'll start on this side, and we'll make it around to you, Tim.
Amanda Gilne, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Shane Reggio, Millville.
Tim Howell, Blackstone.
Carrie Godette, Blackstone.
Madison Marshawn, Blackstone.
Matt Aaronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
All right. Welcome, everybody, and Madison, what's up?
So, we have a lot of events coming up. We have our NHS MT Supple on April 13th. It's a Wednesday from four to six. And then last week, GSA had their connection conference, and they reported back that it went well, and the students liked the workshops. Spring sports games start next week, the first one. Stucco is planning a few outdoor events in spring. They're still getting, like, finished off, so it's still in the works. And then schedules are being picked right now, and then we have our senior events that just came out, so I can list those. Prom is May 6th. Our banquet is May 20th. Our last day pizza party is Friday, May 27th. Our awards ceremony is Thursday, June 2nd. Our class trip is Wednesday, June 1st. Graduation is June 3rd, and then there's three post-graduation celebrations.
Wow.
Yeah.
Three?
Yes, on the 6th, 7th, and 8th.
Wow.
Yeah. We're gonna celebrate.
Wow, good for you.
So, can I just confirm, awards 6-2, graduation 6-3, and Supple 4-13?
Yes.
We usually do that?
Yes.
We usually make our rounds.
Trip was June 1st. Yeah, we usually, we, in the past, we've had a meeting at the high school, so we all go to the Supple, but that's in between the two meeting dates.
Mm-hmm. We're the 7th and 28th.
Well, I'm making one of the soups.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
What are you making?
I'm making tomato soup.
Do you know what the, um, what the cost of the ticket?
Yes, they're $7.
$7. Do you know what time prom is?
Yes. Prom is 6 to 10 on that Friday.
Where?
It's in Warwick at the Crown Plaza.
You got your dress yet?
I do.
Altered yet?
Yes. Actually, it did have to be altered. That's how you know it's the dress.
That's how you know, yeah.
It fit perfectly, and I was like, this is it.
What color?
It's black, but I have pink shoes, so it adds.
There you go. A pop of color. How many more days until?
My daughter wore the first one she tried on.
Really?
Yeah, my daughter went shopping, and she got the first dress she tried on, and it fit perfectly.
That's how you know.
And you were with her, right, Matt?
No. Not at all.
But that's when your wife said, "No more, we don't need to try anymore."
Exactly.
And do you know what color hers is?
Yes, it's emerald green.
Ooh. That's, thank you.
It's a pretty color.
And it's beautiful.
It's my favorite color.
That your favorite color?
Yes.
How many days until graduation? You have to be counting by now.
I have no clue. I think it's 60-ish, somewhere around there.
Okay, if it's not, we're making you say 50 days, and everybody else will be gone after 40.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your meeting.
Now, Jeff?
Yeah. Oh, wait, Madison.
Don't trip.
My campaign, just because we're following on very high cost times, and a lot of these over here, sometimes these fundraisers aren't as successful with everything going on. My campaign is gonna buy 50 tickets, so that you have available to make sure that people can attend. So, you'll get Dr. DeFalco a check out of our campaign for $350, so that you have 50 tickets available for anybody that finds it kinda tough to.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's so considerate.
No problem. Because you know what? Nothing's better than counting the days of the end of the pandemic, so I can understand why you don't, you don't have to count the days of the season.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Kinda cool. Well, and on that note, I'm gonna flip our agenda, so we can hear from Representative Soder. You're gonna talk to us about the Rise Initiative.
Yes, 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 and just with the budget coming up too, so briefly discuss that.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, thank you, and I probably, I sometimes have to inject, when I get things gonna run through my head, Dr. DeFalco knows that, I just kinda blurb them out and say, "I better speak up now, or forever hold my peace."
There you go.
Yeah, no, this has very, been a very tough time for a lot of people, and we just entered the pandemic. Now, we're ending, we're entering a very rising cost of just average goods, eggs, milk. Eggs, we haven't even seen the price yet because of the bird flu situation, so things are getting harder and harder for folks, so we just wanna make sure folks have the ability, as we're opened up, to be with their families, and enjoy their families, and afford to be with their families. It's very tough, so, you know, I don't think I've ever paid $85 for frilling up my tank before in my life, so today was sticker shock. I wasn't really paying attention the last couple of weeks, but now I'm really paying attention. So, with that said, back in 2020, when the pandemic started, so many of us were separated from our families, and we wanted to make sure that our seniors, our most vulnerable population, always had something to look forward to, and Easter is one of those times of years where, you know, Christmas is wonderful, but I always say Easter is one of those times that we all should celebrate, a very joyous and happy time. And not only is it spring, Passover, and everything else that goes on in the spring, but it's a wonderful time of year, and it's a renewed sense of life. With that said, I came up with the Rise Up Initiative, where we wanted to make sure that everybody had a nice dinner for Easter. We did serve them on dinner that, that year. It was all thrown together very quickly, calling a lot of folks, a lot of people, putting it out there, social media, but they responded, and the communities, and the 8th was the district, like they always do, respond, and we served 600 meals that year. Second year, we did it, and we thought we would be in a little bit different place, and we were. We were able to work a little bit closer, and still be safe, and wear masks, and still have to do drive-throughs, but we served 900 meals last year. I realized that this year was gonna be a lot tougher than I anticipated, and, you know, one of the things I heard was so many people wanted to donate, but it was very hard, because my campaign is not a nonprofit. So, the Uxbridge Elderly Connection came to me and said, "You know, how are we gonna be able to continue to do this, because we think it's a wonderful thing, we wanna carry it on?" And I said, "Well, it's interesting you say that, because I have a lot of people who wanna donate, and I have no place for them to donate to the amount of cost that it's gonna take to do what we need to do." They stepped to the plate, they're a nonprofit, and they are taking over the Rising Up Initiative. And we're still helping, we're still volunteering, we're still pushing it. We just happen to be a sponsor this year, and a very vocal sponsor, and we'll continue to be a very vocal sponsor. But I'm happy to say that we had a, they had a very generous amount of corporate donations come in, that they're going to be able to make sure that not only do we match what we did last year, but if we do get more, and we anticipate, we think we will probably get more because of the cost of everything going on right now. Generally, we focused on seniors, but I just wanna make sure if anybody needs a meal, I just wanna, we're not gonna refuse you. We want every senior to make sure they take advantage of this. It's not about where you are on the income spectrum of things, it's just about the sense of community, what we have done to get through the pandemic, and how we all came together to do it. And I know it was a tough time, but when you can do these things, and figure out ways to do things safely and effectively, we can all do it. And I think that's the one thing, if anything came out of Rising Up, or say, the pandemic, was that you could pull something out of it and keep going with it, and keep that sense of community going. And I wanna keep that going forward. I hope it goes on for many years to come. Somebody asked me the other day, "Well, if you're not in this position anymore, it's gonna just fade away," and I said, "No, it just makes it easier for me to be the head of the, whatever organization that's gonna be doing it, because I wanna make sure that we can continue to do it, because I think it's a great thing." And I'm hoping what's gonna happen out of this is that we will have a Rising Up nonprofit by next year, that will have a committee, and will be able to do things throughout the entire year. I think it's very important. You know, a lot of people think because we're in a suburban setting that we don't have some of the things that happen around in the cities. We do. And I will say that most people around here are very proud, they won't ask for help, and sometimes you just have to pull them aside and let them know that it's okay to ask for help. And, and we learned that more and more these last two years. So, I wanna thank the opportunity, I hope the opportunity that we can use the school again, the elementary school, to pack out the meals. Blackstone and Millville, meals will be packed out, all the good stuff. Good stuff, we'll be making all the food, we'll pack them out. At 9:30, we're gonna have cool tote bags this year, so it's not gonna be the plastic stuff, so they'll be reusable, which is awesome, I'm all about that. And we're gonna be packing those out, and ready to go, and have a drive-through like we did last year, and I think we were done by 1 o'clock very easily. And then the meals that we had to deliver, we will deliver. If you cannot make it, please let us know, and we will deliver those meals. So, we are very excited.
So, Mike, will you ask for volunteers to help do that?
Yes.
Because I know my daughter, her friend absolutely had, like, the best conversation they've probably ever had with an elderly person delivering one of those meals.
That's awesome, and that's the whole purpose of it. And, yes, if you go to my Facebook page, my State Representative Mike Soder page, there's gonna be a link, and we're gonna really be pushing that this week. You hit that link, you fill out the information, we will get a list. And there'll also be information, if people do wanna make donations, the Uxbridge Elderly Connection will be accepting donations, and whatever it is. And just keep in mind that a meal this year is about $12 per person, last year was about $8. So, and last year, you know, it was tough, because the campaign can only accept so much in dollar denominations from each individual by law, so we had to spend, you know, I, and for me, it was fine, you know, it was a $7,800 bill last year, which is, which is okay, which is great, and that's what we wanna do, but we had so many corporate folks wanting to donate, I can't accept corporate donations, so it makes it very tough. So, the Uxbridge Elderly Connection stepped up, and I'm thankful for them, and they love it, and they wanna keep the tradition going, so. And that's what's great, all of my communities are working together, it's not territorial, one's not upset the other one's doing over the other. Everybody was like, "That is fantastic, that is great news," and they all, that's what's great about the senior centers, is that all the senior center directors all talk with one another, as the superintendents, and it's a great collaboration, so. And that, Madam Chair, is one of the biggest things that I love about this, is that, yes, students get to talk to seniors, and it's, it's, that's just, and I talked to so many seniors, and that's, if anything they remember during this miserable two years, it's that. It's that, that I made sure that we had some sort of contact, some sense of purpose for these seniors.
But even packing the food.
Your son.
Yeah, and but even the community that's in that space is awesome.
Yeah.
And just working with people from all across the towns, and getting to meet new people, and setting up the little assembly lines, you know, it was fun.
Yeah, it is, and it's quick, and now we're like pros at it.
Made it a good.
We have 1,500 meals, ah, what's another 600?
Yeah.
That's another 600. So, I just wanna make sure that people just don't feel this is just for seniors. If you are struggling, that link, just hit that link, and also tell, ask if you need a meal, and if you do need meals, just tell us how many you need. If you have children in the house, and you need something, please do not hesitate. And I would say to all the schools, don't be afraid to reach out to us, and reach out to those families that you know desperately need it, and we can keep that. If you come to us and say, "We need to keep it confidential," we will, we'll let you handle the deliveries, we'll let you, you know who those folks are. Please, it's, it's tough out there right now. You know, everybody's bragging about how great, everything's open, but for the average person right now, believe me, it's, it's, it's very, very, very tough.
Yeah. It stresses that.
Yeah. So, budget is coming up, Budget Week's gonna be coming up, the end of April for the state. If revenues keep going the way we're going, I don't anticipate us having any issues. I did talk to the chairman today of House Ways and Means, talked to him about regional transportation, which I know is very important. I know a group of us are really going to push for that 90% number, getting back to where we need to be. You know, it's amazing how we were all excited when we got there, you know, how fast we took it away, but I think there should be no reason, we're gonna keep pushing that, we have a lot of delegations that are in regional transportation situations, and that's a burden on your budget, we know that. That's a big, big number for you, so we're really gonna push that issue, that we really need to get back to that number, and there should be no reason. I'm so sick of hearing that we're flooded with cash. You know, you can only put so much in rainy day funds, it's great, it's a wonderful thing, but we also got some struggles here, and we need to, we need to make sure that we tap into those things. I'm hoping that coming out of the budget, there'll be, you'll see some other increases. I think the governor is proposing some different increases to the budget for education. We really wanna get this thing rolling in high gear, and this is the time to do it, if we can spend a little bit more money in doing the things that we need to do. You know, one of the things I said to the chairman today of House Ways and Means, I said, "You know, we're all talking about our surpluses, but you gotta realize, local communities haven't been able to build their surpluses, whether it's school departments, whether it's municipalities." You know, they're just trying to figure out how to get back, things back on track, and make sure that they could spend some of this opera money that they have to spend in a certain amount of time. And the opera money is great, but it's not like money that they can just throw in their reserve funds and say, "Hey, just 'cause it's a rainy day, we're gonna be able to do it." You cannot do that with that money. But it doesn't also, it doesn't help you relieve your budgetary issues, it's more directed towards projects and things that you need to do. So, it's not like it helps in any way with the budget process for you. So, I said, "It would be nice if we could get a little bit of an, you know, a better increase than what we're proposing for education, for our regional districts and our school districts, because it would help them take some of that money and maybe actually surplus it, so that we, we..." I mean, we're all anticipating a slowdown here soon, but, you know, I think that's what we're all afraid of. And, you know, mail tax and everything is coming in at a higher number, but everybody's gonna realize mail tax is coming in at an inflated number. So, it's, it's a little bit of a struggle. So, my hope is, is that we get through this process, and we're gonna be paying very much attention to the regional school piece of it, transportation piece of it, because I know that's essential, so. And if we don't see an increase there, we're gonna file an amendment to the budget to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. I haven't been here in a while, and it's great to see everybody's faces.
Yeah, you too.
And so, I'm hoping that if you have any questions, please ask, any concerns?
And just to let, is it all right if I?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, I know we had spoken briefly about it, but we are putting in a statement of interest.
Okay.
For a project, and we know, it's, you know, it's a long shot, like everybody else, when they put their, their statement of interest in, but just wanna make sure.
So, I will just say to you, we here, you know, as far as my job, what I have to do for that is, wherever you lead that direction, my job is to help you navigate that system, get attention to it, try to move you faster and faster up the list, as you're getting closer in anticipation of what you're gonna do. So, you know, the biggest thing with those types of projects, school projects and new school projects, is the level of excitement is there, and if we don't get you through the state process, and there's a ton of delays, all that excitement deflates, and we don't want that to happen, because we know how hard it is. It's expensive, it's gonna be expensive for residents, it's gonna be expensive for a lot of people, but I think in the end game, I think it's touring the schools in your district, and I want the public to know that's not an endorsement one way or another, just be very clear on that.
Fair enough.
But I'm also a businessman, and you can walk that high school a thousand ways to Sunday. I don't think, there's, there's a lot of issues there, and there's a lot of things that are gonna cost a lot of money. Whether you invest a certain amount of money, there's always issues that are gonna arise, so just keep that in mind as, as everybody's anticipating those things. I went through it as a selectman in Bellingham, we closed the school down, where we were, we didn't really need, but we were gonna spend $10 million, which was in reality gonna be $20 million, or really, you're gonna be running in circles, when you can actually take that money and invest it in other places to make things better and bigger for everybody else, and it's, it's being smart with your money. But my job is, you know, when people ask me, I know a few people have asked me, my job is to just be attentive, be listening very carefully to all of you, and, and working, I just have to say, working with Dr. DeFalco, he's not doing this just because he wants a new school. Doing it because he, that school, he knows there's a need, and he's not just doing it to add another building or add another expense. He's got a plan, and he's got a course of action, and just listen very carefully, and don't be afraid to ask a lot of questions.
Yep.
That's a good thing. So, yes, we're here, we're ready to work with you in any way we need to, to help expedite questions, answers through the state, and then when we get to a final point, really start pushing and putting the, putting the gas on to help the community on whatever they decide to do. So, lastly, I know that, Madam Chair, I understand that this is technically your last meeting, although I'm hearing that there's not an opponent, so it might not technically be your last meeting.
But I'm sure there's somebody waiting to be written in, I'm sure it is. Somebody wants to step up.
But if this is your last meeting, I just wanna say, it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor working with you.
Right back at you, thank you.
You've given many community, you know, I, you know, I've had so many retire, I came into this job, and it was like, everybody's leaving. It's hard, but it, I just wanna say that you have been very gracious to me, not only when I was a candidate, to talk to me about the issues and the things, and the things that are important to you, but I also know to this regional school district, and just when I got elected, sitting down with me and really working together for the common good, because that's what I came in here to do. I didn't here with, I didn't come into this with an agenda, I never do, and actually, I was asked today if I had an opponent, and I said, "Look, if there's somebody who thinks they can do it better than I can, God bless them, I ask them to do it." You know, I give it all I have, I give every ounce of it, and I, all of you give every ounce of it, and they, they sometimes forget elected officials. My, I'm very lucky, I have a lot of elected officials who, who care, and they set their egos aside, and are concentrating on the people they represent, and that's why I love the 8th was the district, and that's why I brag about it. Now, I just have to figure out Medway, because I've got a little piece of Medway now, so I gotta figure out Medway, but it's fun, it's exciting, but, Madam Chair, I'm excited about working with you again on Rise Up, and many years on that, I'm sure, but I'm sure you're, this won't be the last thing that we see around.
Sure it won't.
But it's, it's been awesome, and please, I'm always here.
Thank you.
To burn and air and listen, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it. Thank you for the support, thank you.
Good night.
You too.
Okay, we have some warrant, are they going around? Did we get one?
Yeah.
Oh, they're over there, yeah.
And minutes of the meeting from March 10th, we'll entertain a motion to approve it as
a consent agenda A.
So, second.
Move by Erin, seconded by Tammy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll have it. Public forum. Thanks for being part of the public, though. School committee items, it is now time to certify the FY23 budget. We have multiple motions to make. Usually what we do is, Amanda, you start and read the first one, and Tammy will second it, and then Tammy will read the second one.
Hope you get the short one.
Yeah, hope you get the, make sure Erin gets the one with all the money. But so you just kinda read that first one, and...
All right. So, there's a motion, move to adopt the gross operating budget for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $28,661,304.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $28,661,304. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
I move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2022-2023 year. Chapter 70, $11,084,329. Regional transportation, $664,881. School choice tuition, $231,693. Charter school reimbursement, $238,207. Above reimbursements total, $12,219,110. The total operating budget for 2022-2023 is $28,661,304.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2022-2023 year. Chapter 70, $11,84329. Regional transportation, $664,881. School choice, $231,693. Charter school reimbursement, $238,207. Above reimbursements total, $12,219,110. And that, and I assume that comes off of the total operating budget of 20, for 2022-23, which, as in the first motion, was $28,661,304.
Can I just say that number one more time? You said $20,000. Just say the number again.
Two, $28,661,304, but that seems, is that the correct wording? We don't subtract the reimbursement? It says the total operating. Well, I know it does, but somewhere we don't, we don't have a subtraction.
There are other reimbursements that we apply, so it wouldn't really be definitively the net operating.
Okay, any other discussion?
We could cross that line out in future.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Does we already have that in our, uh... Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I move to assess the amount of $10,164,497 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2022-2023 year, which includes $7,525,714 for the minimum contribution, $1,361,261 in exclusionary costs, and $1,277,522 in supplemental investments.
Second. It's been a motion to assess the amount of $10,164,497 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2022-2023 year, which includes $7,525,714 for minimum contribution, $1,361,261 for exclusionary, and $1,277,522 in supplemental. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes as read. I move to assess the amount of $3,272,540 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2022-2023 year, which includes $2,423,620 for the minimum contribution, $437,930 in exclusionary costs, and $410,990 in supplemental investments.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded to assess the amount of $3,272,540 to the town of Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2022-2023 year, which includes $2,423,620
for the minimum contribution, $437,930 in exclusionary costs, and $410,999 in supplemental investments. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Lucky next person.
Thank you. I move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2022, 2023. Excess and deficiency, $150,000. Medicaid, $175,000. Revenue, user fees, $89,000. Revenue, gate fees, $15,000. Revenue, classroom rental, $52,000. Revenue, pre-K tuition, $115,000, for a total of $596,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the 2022, 2023 school year. Excess and deficiency, $150,000. Medicaid, $175,000. User fee revenues, $89,000. Gate fee revenues, $15,000. Classroom rental revenue, $52,000. Pre-K tuition revenue, $115,000, for a grand total of $596,000. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstaining? So moved.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $191,762 to be assessed solely.
No, the one above that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $530,657 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $138,111 for the FWH Middle School, $62,900 for the JFK Boiler Windows Project, $159,411 for the roof projects, and $170,235 for asbestos remediation work to be done at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $530,657 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $138,111 for the FWH Middle School, $62,900 for JFK Boiler Window Projects, $159,411 for the roof projects, and $170,235 for asbestos remediation work to be done at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So moved.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $191,762 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $44,431 for the FWH Middle School, $22,078 for the Millville Boiler Project, $70,488 for the roof projects, and $54,765 for asbestos remediation work to be done at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School.
Second. Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $191,762 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $44,431 for the FWH Middle School, $22,078 for the Millville Boiler Project, $70,488 for the roof projects, and $54,765 for asbestos remediation work to be done at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So moved.
Move to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency.
Is there a second? Second. It's been, the motion on the floor to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, so moved. Keep going, still budget. Oh, no, you keep going. Oh, does everybody have the new one, Matt?
No, I do. People weren't.
We don't have anything else.
Just another page. Yeah, okay.
It's a separate.
Yeah, it's another, it's an additional.
It's an additional budget.
It's a revised OPEB.
It's just a different wording for it.
So are we going right to the school committee segment here?
Yep, after that. Do we have them in the reverse order here?
Yeah. So this one is no good?
Correct.
It's all part of the budget.
This is a revised.
It's really just the explanation on the top that is revised.
Here may be the explanation.
Yes, please.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
OPEB motion. The Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee has publicly discussed the issue of other post-employment benefits, OPEB, with the select boards and finance committees of both towns. As a result of these discussions, the district is looking to include OPEB in its operating budget and assess this to the towns as part of the exclusionary costs. Given that this will require a modification to the regional agreement, the district will be able to do so.
Will not be.
Will not be able to do so for the FY '23 budget year. We are therefore looking to have the towns include a separate article for OPEB on each of their annual town meeting warrants. As such, I hereby move that the following warrant item be included in each member town's upcoming annual town meeting, to see if the town will vote to authorize the total payment of $100,000 to be deposited into the OPEB trust fund of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Said funds may only be removed to pay some portion of health benefits for retirees from the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. This payment will be split according to the following percentages and amounts. 75.66% or $75,660 to be paid by the town of Blackstone, 24.34% or $24,340 to be paid by the town of Millville. Said payments shall be separate and apart from payments made toward the operating and capital budgets of the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. So I have discussion. Or I have comments. So this originally came up, as you all are aware, in our joint meeting where we, as a school committee, were very clear that we had all we could do to create an operating budget down to the dollars and cents that supported the program in service to the students of this communities and of our district. And that while we acknowledge that OPEB is a liability of the district and that supporting our retirees is very important, we could not do so solely by ourselves. That we needed the commitment of our communities to support this and that we were looking for a plan that would enable annual payments into this trust to try to pay it down or pay down the liability. And we spent a good majority of that joint meeting having this discussion. As part of the joint meeting, we had talked about for this first year, making this separate so that it doesn't tie up the school committee budget with the chance that communities, while the boards of selectmen have supported contributions to OPEB, we don't know what the communities will support. And if in fact they taught, it was put directly into the budget at first, could alter passing of the budget, which then creates a whole other kind of issue. Whereas if it was listed separately, the communities could have the discussion, hopefully help people understand what OPEB liability is, make a, a town commitment from both of the towns to, to move this going forward and to, in the future, once the regional agreement is, is changed and clarified to say what those exclusionary costs are, make it an annual part of the operating budget as the towns can agree to do. So we'll always go back to a discussion with the towns of what is affordable in any given year, just like we get a new transportation contract, the exclusionary transportation line changes. We get an agreement on OPEB that that line would change. So that was the idea. I have since come to learn that that was not the understanding of some of the members who were present that evening and have asked that it be put directly in to the operating warrant items that we just passed. And my response to that was, I still believe in this first year, we need to let this ride, as we discussed, as a joint committee, and see how the towns feel about the towns making an additional commitment to support the school district with additional funds on an annual basis. So that's why it's this motion separated out and it wasn't in the 28 million XYZ, but it will become part of the 28 million. And that, and that's why that end line towards the operating, it'll be separate, but it will be part of the operating budget. So if anybody was confused, that's why. Did I explain that, Matt?
Yes, very well.
Anyone else? Hearing no discussion, I will entertain the motion as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? By the way, I say aye. Okay. Next.
In our annual budget, we have certified stipends of $1,500 for each regular member and $1,800 for the chairman. I therefore move that the following warrant item be included in each member town's upcoming annual town meeting, to see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members and to set the annual amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member and $1,800 for the chairman, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members and to set the annual amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member and $1,800 for the chairman, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, any abstentions? The ayes have it. All right, that's our budget. Superintendent mid-cycle evaluation.
I do apologize for the late email, but I did send it when I got here with the link to all the responses. I did share it with Jason earlier today. And I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, but it does show for the majority of his goals. He is on target. There was just one that had an off-target for student learning, but there are some comments there that Jason, I'm sure, will go over and dive right into. Did you have any comments on your mid-year?
No, just other than I really appreciate the feedback from the committee. As everyone knows, this is our fourth evaluation cycle, my fourth evaluation cycle with the committee. I take this very serious. So the feedback is really helpful and important and I've already laid out some next steps as a result of reviewing all of the feedback. But I also feel, and I know you've heard me say this before, this is also an evaluation of the district and the work as a whole, because I don't do this on my own. We have a really strong leadership team and we have excellent educators that are making the work happen every day in the classroom. So I see this as almost a celebratory moment of their work, because I, I do feel that the district is on target and moving in the right direction. And it feels really good that we are not doing a reset with the work because of the pandemic. We just kept moving. And so, you know, I know you've heard me say that before. So I've got some good next steps already laid out, some Facebook Live ideas that we're gonna, somebody had given that suggestion, which I think is a great one, to get some of those pieces back up and running. And the drum beats on, so I look forward to giving updates through the spring and to giving, I know my final evaluation, which will almost be in two parts this year. One, which will be in June-ish, July-ish, and then one in October, when our MCAS results come out. As the committee knows, I've said repeatedly, hold me accountable for the outcomes. And you've done that. And so I really appreciate that. We are students first and everything we do, we do our best to try to improve outcomes for the students that we serve. And I look forward to continuing that work. So thank you so much for the feedback.
Anybody else have comments they want to make in regards to that? All right. That concludes us and we will move to the report of the superintendent.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of items this evening. The first, I just want to give a, a very brief update in terms of the progress we're making with, with the selection and, and purchase of our math program. Believe it or not, since the last meeting, we've moved quite a bit forward with this. We have already ordered the high school program and we are doing a pilot in the spring, in geometry specifically. And we're already setting up all of the online tools and resources for the students and staff, so they can actually get in there and start playing with, with the materials. At the K to eight level, we are finalizing our orders. You mentioned the bigger order, because this is more grade spans and because the department's paying for a portion of it, as you can imagine, they're a little finicky about how they get the order. So we're working with our vendor to put the package together, just how they are asking for it. It is worth the $80,000.
There you go, exactly.
So, but while they're doing that, I should have that by tomorrow. We have also set up, I think, a few really important pieces just to highlight. We are doing a pilot at the middle school in the spring, specifically around the unit of data and statistics. So our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will be doing kind of a deep dive into that work with our math teachers. And then K through 12, we are doing a two-hour professional development and program launch in the spring. If you remember, we did that a couple of years ago with the literacy and it really did make a big difference. Because we're ahead of it, we do the initial two-hour overview, all the materials are in, and then the teachers leave with their materials at the end of the summer with a training and they can start planning and playing with those materials and resources. We also booked the next two trainings, so we secured Tuesday, August 30th, as a full day training for all of our staff in mathematics. And we booked November 4th for the second full day training and we'll be doing some coaching and virtual sessions in between. So in, in, in the midst of that, Jill PG has also been working with our vendor, particularly at the K through eight level, at the intervention level for specific additional materials and resources and how to best utilize those to really reach those students that need it the most, like those tier two, tier three interventions. So I mention that only so that you know that that is still running parallel as we continue to change the core program. So lots of really good work is happening already with our math program. My next item is to discuss an early retirement incentive. So in your packet, you have a few different, you have three handouts. And if you, you'll see there's a motion on the cover and then there is a two-page spreadsheet that's somewhat color-coded, that kind of salmon color and the, and the purple color all the way, or lilac, whatever that is, all the way at the grand total column. And so let me just explain what we're looking at. I know we've, we've done this the last couple of years. And if you are looking at this two-page or thinking, wow, this looks like a fairly long list, last year's was actually longer. If you remember, any employee that has met the minimum threshold of numbers of years and age is technically eligible. The, you know, the likelihood of somebody, you know, retiring that started in, you know, the mid to late 19, or was born in mid to late 1970s is fairly unlikely. So.
Unfortunately.
Right, but it, right.
Oh, one never knows.
But it doesn't mean that they're technically not eligible.
One never knows.
Yes. But they are still technically eligible. Yes. But they are still technically eligible. Although I will kind of chuckle. Matt and I looked at some of these dates, and we're like, what? And then we went back, and we're like, oh, it's the eligibility thresholds.
I might be on there.
You're not. I made sure of that.
Yeah.
But, but these are all of our current employees that are eligible. And what you're looking at as far as data is the number of sick days and the sick day buyback for each of the eligible Unit A and Unit C employees, the number of personal days and the personal day buyback. And remember, the buyback is at a different rate.
Right.
For each of the different bargaining, for the two bargaining units. So for instance, the personal day buyback for Unit A is $80. The personal day buyback for Unit C is 30. So if you're wondering why the, the rates are, there's a significant difference between the numbers, that's the reason. And then you can see the total there for the personal buyback. And then the early retirement incentive. So you can see, again, those who just need a refresher, a couple of years ago, if you look at the motion page, which was on the cover of that, at the bottom, remember, we, we came up with the different amounts for the different classifications within Unit C? So that speaks to why there's a different amount for the early retirement incentive listed below. And then you can see the grand total for each of the eligible employees. And then the grand total on the second page of the spreadsheet is $456,807.50, if every single person here took it, which we, if, if we get half a dozen, that's usually about the extent to which we have people that take advantage of this. But I will say, on the other end, as we look at, and I know we have this conversation each year, but when we look at our salary line, and you can see that, you know, historically, we've had a bit of an overage, it's because of the hiring. When you have somebody that retires at, at $85,000, and we replace them with someone at 50, and you do that three or four times, that's pretty significant.
Pays this cost.
It does. And.
And then some.
And then some. And that's, that's how we end up with an opportunity sometimes to get a math program, or to move forward with a van, although we actually paid for that this year with FEMA, AMI Reimbursements. But that, that can be how we're able to do some additional things as the year goes.
Somebody want to, who's turn to read? Tim, I think it's the TU.
Is it you or me?
I'll read it.
You can do the first one. You can do the second one.
School Committee Motion of Early Retirement Incentive for Unit A Members. Motion that the school committee hereby approves the early retirement incentive to Unit A members if they retire effective June 30, 2022. The district will pay $7,500 to employees who submit their intention to retire by May 27, 2022. The $7,500 will be taxed and is not pensionable and will be paid by July 31, 2022. Members would not be eligible for the sick leave incentive. Members who declared future retirement are eligible. Employees must be eligible to retire from MTRS.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve an early retirement incentive to Unit A members if they retire effective June 30, 2022, with the stipulations as read. Is there any discussion?
It's a small question. So you gave us the grand total here, and you said that's if everyone, it has been a different kind of year for a few years. So are we prepared if it's more than.
Than usual?
Has been in the past. What are we, what amount are we prepared for?
Great question. And I think what we've done in the past has been helpful in terms of the payout date, because it's a, it's a July 31 payout date. So there's actually a way that we can work before we close the books to do something. And then as we move forward, if we can start anticipating savings, we can also use a different. So yes, I think we would be, I think we'd be okay. And I think you're right. I do think we're going to have more than we normally do.
I think so.
I definitely think you're right about that. If every individual on this sheet retired, you know, I don't.
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that MTRS would be able to, you know, process their paperwork fast enough to get them situated. But, I mean, but I do think you're right, Erin. I think we'll have more than we have had in the past. But I, I do not think it's going to be anything that we can't manage. Did we prepare for a bottom-line number? Nothing outside of what we've run, because I don't know who on this list is going to do that. But again, if all these individuals leave and we replace them at equal or less than costs, we're going to have a significant savings in our salary line.
I don't think we'd find the help.
Matt and I will be teaching next year. Kindergarten, second grade. You're all teaching.
Anyone else? All right. Motion on the floor as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
And can I mention, Jane, just one other piece on that. As a reminder to the committee, for the first time, I think ever, we are doing a Blackstone Valley educator recruitment job fair at Milford on April 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 o'clock. We have school committees, so I'll be leaving about 5:00 to get back for that. But our whole team is ready. We've got all of our, you know, anticipated vacancies there. And so our, our principals and their teams will be heavily recruiting, just in case. We're going to start collecting resumes, interviewing people right on the spot, and setting up model lessons. So we're working very hard to make sure that we can address any vacancies that we might have as a result.
I move that the school committee hereby approves the early retirement incentive to Unit C members if they retire effective June 30, 2022. The district will pay the following to employees who submit their intention to retire by May 27, 2022. $3,500 for a full seven-and-a-half-hour custodian, $3,000 for a six-and-a-half-hour power professional, $2,500 for a 12-month administrative assistant, $2,000 for a six-hour-per-day cafeteria worker. These amounts are to be prorated based on hours worked and length of time. Employees must be eligible to retire from WCRS. Members who declared future retirement are eligible.
Second.
There's a motion and second, that the school committee approve early retirement incentive to Unit C members if they retire effective June 30, 2022, with the stipulations as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. In my last item, I just have a brief update on spring sports. Our athletic director could not be here this evening, so I'm just going to share some prepared remarks that he put forward. We, we'll do our best to answer any questions you might have, and what we, what, what we cannot answer, I will certainly get the answers to and make sure that you have them. But track and field numbers, currently, we have 26 middle school students and 14 high school students that are participating. In girls' tennis, we have 20 high school students.
Wow.
Which is a very large number.
Must be that new court.
That's right. Based on numbers for softball, there will be a middle school team and a few JV games that they'll be able to play due to opponent availability, and a varsity softball team. The high school, we have 16 softball players registered, and for middle school, we have 13 softball players registered. And for baseball, based on the numbers, there will be a middle school team and a varsity team. For high school, we have 15 baseball players registered, and for middle school, we have 20.
Nice.
Baseball players registered, which is awesome. Yeah.
They heard about the work going on in the field.
That's right.
Is that just eighth graders, or is that a seventh, middle school?
I, no, it's middle school, sixth.
It's the middle school, right?
Do, do we have to do something? We, when we changed to a middle school soccer team, we had to motion for that to happen. So I've heard that the middle school was, we were shifting to baseball, and I didn't know softball, but there was something we had to do as a committee for the middle school soccer team, and we had, we were on a timeline because we couldn't get onto a schedule. I just don't recall what that was.
I remember doing something about, or.
Soccer.
Soccer, but it was more so that you used the grounds over at the complex instead of at the high school.
We had to, do you remember? We had to approve something.
Like, was it, is it like a waiver of some sort?
Well, no, we have to file waivers with MIAA.
AIA.
Thank you. But when we have middle schoolers play on high school teams, but we've done all those. We filed all those waivers. But if these are middle school having middle school teams, correct?
Yes, yes.
This is not middle school having high school teams.
With the exception of the.
The JV softball.
Yes, yep.
Which is what we shifted soccer to for last fall.
I do recall there being a discussion with the school committee, and we had a deadline to, I don't recall there being a vote, but I can check that. But I do recall there being a deadline that we had to make a decision, because we had to register the, the student athletes in the league.
Right.
And that league had a, had a deadline to it. But I don't remember there, I don't remember there being a vote, but I can check that. Yeah, I can look into that.
Are they under MIAA, or is it something different with middle school? Do we know what?
I'm not sure.
Is it DBC or?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just wondering who has middle school teams that we will be.
Playing against?
Playing against, because I don't.
I'll, I can get all of that information. I don't know. Middle school teams for softball, middle school teams for baseball, right? And if we need any motions for that.
So, and it is sixth through eighth if, if it's a middle school team?
Yes.
Because typically, the sixth graders weren't able to play JV.
Correct, yes. But they were able to play in the middle school team. That's, we had a soccer team, a middle school soccer team.
Yes.
So let me find that out. I will look at, I'll go back and look at the minutes and see if we did a motion for, for soccer. And then I'll see who are the teams and the league, or like the division that we play in.
Yeah, the division.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Sure. I can get in the update tomorrow.
And if, in that update, Jason, if you could get the best place to find schedules, that's always an, an issue at the beginning.
Sure.
Do you know the answer to that already?
Yeah, they've, they've been using Arbiter.
Arbiter Sports.
A-R-B-I-T-E-R.
Yeah, MIAA's app is no longer doing the scheduling. It's Arbiter Sports is. And you can actually subscribe to each team's calendar. Operates a bit better than MIAA too.
Well, and then there was a dual valley at one point.
Yeah, it's all.
I, I just know it comes up every year, like.
Yep.
How do I find my kid's schedule?
Yeah.
I don't have this app yet.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
That's your Aaron Worth.
Thank you. So the first piece on my report is the transportation contract.
Matt, I'm thinking you're going to have to speak up.
I apologize.
I'm barely hearing, and I'm too people.
The first piece of my report is the transportation contract. I am happy to say that the numbers came in aligned entirely with what was budgeted for, for the FY '23 year. I will say that we put out an invitation for bids. In the end, we did only receive one bid from Tellstones. I can also say, however, in speaking with Neil Tellstone, he knows of 13 requests for bids that were all, out of 13, there were 11 communities that only had one bid for transportation. The, the climate is really difficult, especially in areas where the drivers are from the local communities, because other companies really don't have the support of the staff to, to be able to come in and offer competitive rates. However, Tellstones did offer us very competitive rates, not competitive against themselves, but against the market. And as you can see, the costs are outlined on the second page of the document included in the package. It has the total costs for all of the three years, and then there are additional optional extensions of the contract for two, for two more years. That would be executed at the discretion of the district. So this contract, there's a page Form J. We would be looking for approval to sign off on this agreement, and then we would need school committee signatures, not necessarily this evening, but we would need signatures for the contract to be executed.
I will entertain a motion to approve the contract as submitted.
I so move.
Thank you, Tim. Any second, second? Any questions or discussion?
Matt, can you just, the last section?
On page one.
Of the in-town trips, on page 22. In-town trips, one hour or less over 150, so.
To go over to where you're going. In other words, and then to return. So if you're just taking them somewhere, it's 150. If you're taking them and bringing them back, it's 300? Is that how I read it?
Yes.
I thought they usually donated the in-town. But is that like?
Depends on, it depends on what the, so these are the prices that are quoted to the district, but Tellstones has done a lot.
So this is what we did have?
Yeah. Tellstones has done a lot about our transportation gratuitously, just.
Neil has driven himself.
Neil has driven, the bus is himself.
He'll jump on and grab the kids. Yeah.
But some, they have to have it in the agreement so that there are charges that can be assessed. But there are different specific activities that they have definitely done for no cost.
Anyone else? All those in favor of approving this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Matt, do you have an original, or I can come in and?
I did not bring the original here. I'll arrange that with you.
Is there an urgency?
No. The next piece of my report is the capital needs update. As we are all happy to discuss, Dr. DeFalco and I have started piecing together the parts of the statement of interest, working with the, the committee to move that forward. We also have meetings scheduled. We have our next capital subcommittee meeting on March 30th, and that's the Wednesday. And on the same evening, Dr. DeFalco or myself, I think we're going to draw straws that evening.
Dividing con.
And there's also the Blackstone FinCom meeting that evening, at which we will be presenting a slideshow regarding the activity of the capital planning subcommittee and where we stand with respect to submitting the statement of interest.
3:30?
3:30, yes.
What time's FinCom?
FinCom is 6:30.
Yeah.
The Blackstone, the Blackstone FinCom is 6:30. The capital planning subcommittee is 5:30.
Oh, 5:30.
I can double check that.
Yeah, no, let me just check. It could be my calendar. It could be off.
But wait, both Blackstone?
I know the, the capital planning is 5:30.
5:30.
It's, yeah, it's our capital planning subcommittee meeting is 5:30 p.m. here.
The date, 3:30.
Yeah, they're both the same day.
March 30th on 5:30.
I was worried when you said 3:30, somebody thought there was going to be a meeting.
No, sorry.
I was going to, I was going to clarify.
I was reading what he said, so.
5:30 is the capital meeting. It's been a long day.
No, I can't say that.
Oh, it's been a long day. It's been a long, it's been a long, yes.
On March 30th, Wednesday.
Thank you.
At 5:30, Capital Planning Subcommittee.
No, Monday at 7 is the Millville.
Totally. Oh, right, Millville's Monday.
I'll send invites to everybody.
For everything.
Forever.
All right. Thank you.
That concludes my capital report.
Facilities request?
We, oh, I apologize. We have the facilities section. We have facilities requests in your folder, and as well, we've attached the fee schedule.
So the.
The first is the Mike Soder.
The first is the rise up, right? So the one that's like bridge, elderly connections, that looks like it was done in a lovely old mimeograph. You don't think it's blue, red, and yellow? Color scanner. For, so is that on Easter?
No.
No, it's on Sunday, right? Yes, the Sunday before.
We can, okay.
Get your Easter ahead of time, Jane. Get dinner ready.
Oh, and then, you want to do one? Oh, and then, you wanna do one at a time or both at together?
One at a time, yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the use.
Second.
And waive any fees. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the Uxbridge elderly connection without charging any fees? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, the next one is, I can't, I don't wanna tell you what I think that says, so CM select.
Rockhoppers.
Thank you.
Mr. Berry's here if, if we wanna hear from him.
What's a rockhopper?
It's a penguin.
Do you wanna join us up front? You certainly can speak to the.
That's what I thought he said, but I'm not sure.
It is a penguin, yes, so a lot of the.
It's a penguin?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, so a lot of the football teams in this league have different animals as their.
Mascot.
Their mascot and our president of the league came up with rockhoppers. I don't know if it was, he has two, two-year-old sons, so I'm sure watching Happy Feet or something like that. It's probably where he got the idea, but it works. We have a, you know, a cool logo and all the families like it, the kids like it. Our teams do different colors, so some are like a blue, some are orange, some are black, some are purple.
That's awesome.
But yeah. It's actually.
You just wanna use a field, correct?
Yes, for practice.
This one, right, yeah.
And then we were also looking at, so there could be a potential where maybe we could rent the actual football field for games. And then with that being said, I'd entertain, any of your boosters, especially for sports, anything to do with the school, open up the concession stand and you keep 100% of the proceeds from the concession stand. Usually if we do this, we have the, the three games, which would be 10U, 12U, 14U. So you're roughly, say, anywhere from, say about six, six hours. We pay the EMT, the line striping. You know, if we, we need to pay for the porta-potties or whatever, that's all paid by us.
Okay, but Ryan, this isn't that. This is just the practice.
This is for the practice field.
But then eventually we might see one for the.
Eventually, if, if it was something where we could work that into it as well, I would fill out the request and, and send it in. We just don't have a permanent schedule yet, they're still in the works. Cause we're gonna be playing teams from Connecticut, Rhode Island, and possibly New York.
This gets the kids playing, like practicing, right?
Yeah, so right now, we practiced in Marlboro last week and we had five teams on one field at ASBET. And it was from 10U to 12U to 14U. So as you can imagine, it's not easy trying to coordinate that.
This would be great, cause you can be right here.
And all the kids that are on this team is, we have kids from Blackstone, we have kids from Uxbridge, Douglas. Basically all in our area. And parents like it because it's close, you know, I try to schedule practice at 6 o'clock just because I can't make a 5 o'clock practice work and I don't think a lot of parents can. So we try to make it as logistically simple on the parents and the families as possible.
You're gonna freeze, but okay.
They were practicing tonight.
I know.
I canceled my practice yesterday, cause I knew it was gonna rain and I wanted nothing to do with it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have insurance?
Yes.
Do you have those waivers?
Yes, I sent a copy over to, forget what her name is.
Was it Catherine?
Catherine, Catherine was on the email.
Yes, she did. She has them.
Yeah, he sent an electronic copy, I was on that email.
Guys wanna look at it now.
It just isn't checked off on the form, so.
It hadn't been, it hadn't been received by the time the form was put in, but we did just receive it.
She'd sent me the, said I need it back by 4 and I was on a conference call until 3:45 and I was trying to write it out and kinda like get out of the meeting to go put it in the machine to scan it and make the packet.
Yeah, we, we were trying to expedite this process as quickly as we could.
Listen, I appreciate it very much for you guys entertaining the idea.
Did you say this is football?
Huh?
Football.
Football?
Yes.
Regular, not flag?
Tackle, not flag?
Regular tackle.
Dang.
Yep.
Do you know this is a spring/summer league?
So this is just a spring league? And this is a lot of kids that don't play soccer, lacrosse, baseball, anything. So I have 120 tenus, I have three teams that I'm in charge of.
Wow.
And then we had, we had a total of 480 kids sign up this year.
That's great. That's amazing.
That's amazing.
And that's from, you know, Lemonster, we have kids from Rhode Island that are playing for us. So there's a lot of.
Thank you for taking that on.
It's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, I'm sure, no doubt.
But ki, like, this is, kinda goes back to.
This is the feeder thing.
To what we said.
The kids want to be, that's such a great thing, the kids want to get involved.
Kids in our community to get involved.
We've done studies, like, because I'm on the central mass board for football and cheer. And with the COVID year, they're not even offering fall sideline cheer for the cheerleaders. So a lot of the cheerleaders are now left to going to, they're paying a lot of money to go to club sport cheer and.
Which is also a different season.
Right.
Exactly, so I'm, my daughter's doing it and just finishing up her season this weekend and we're in Springfield all weekend. So a lot of the parents, that's a lot of incurred travel, that's a lot of money. So when they do the sideline at the town stuff, you practice two days a week and they're at the games on Sunday mornings and you're only there for an hour, hour and a half and you go home. So we're just trying to, I'm, we've been trying to build a lot of community engagement, so a lot of towns now are starting to, if they don't have enough teams, will combine two towns. We've done it with Grafton, Douglas is huge because they don't offer a lot of school sports and then they have not a lot of town sports. So they combine with Oxford-Webster, Charlton-Dudley and it, it seems to bring the communities together, I think, too.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think it opens up possibilities for those co-ops, for the people that can't field a football team later and that would benefit. The only question I have, are you guys going to need, are you going to get like a porta potty so that, I'm just picturing 120 little boys in the woods over there.
Well, they won't be, they won't be consecutively practicing all together. So like those three nights, only two teams would practice.
But what, what do they do to use the, do they use the inside bathrooms?
We had a porta potty out on the.
I think it goes though for season, I thought.
Yeah, it might just be in the fall.
If there's one, if I need to go get one, I get one delivered and just let me know where it needs to go.
I guess that's my question.
We can work that out.
Okay.
If there's a trash bag or whatever.
There's no way to go to the bathroom.
No, 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 they need a bathroom.
Yeah, even the parents or like a sibling.
Mr. Berry, if you email us back about that, Scott Hebert, our interim director of facilities and I will work on, on that with you.
Yeah, cause I think it goes out during soccer.
Worst case scenario, I will send them to my house down the street. They can go there if they have to.
So do we need a motion on this?
We do.
I move to accept it as written.
And aye, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? We're good to go?
Awesome, thank you very much, right? I've seen most of you.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
6:30?
So no practice on Wednesday.
That's right.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for having me.
Or on 3:30.
That concludes your facility report, Matt?
Indeed it does.
Alrighty. All right, any school committee forum topics?
Matt didn't do any financials.
Well, this is the bud, this is the budget budget. Which puts up to each child.
Those are the supporting documents for the motions that were made.
Oh.
For the certification.
Those are your dollars and cents.
Doesn't feel like a complete meeting without looking at.
No, we're missing.
We're not reading our eyes.
Yes, the first, yeah, this is the second meeting of March, so we haven't, yeah, we do it in the first meeting.
First one.
I'll give a little update from the elementary school PTO side of things. Just, we're moving forward with what formerly were like the father-daughter, mother-son dance events. There is going to be the, they call it girl and special guy guest dance. And they're splitting it by grades because now we're so many kids. There's a third through fifth grade on April 23rd and the pre-K through 2 will be April 30th. The younger girls are gonna be at the BMR, the older girls are off-site Arrowhead Acres. I guess BPO had already booked it two years ago, so they deposited, they just kinda changed the date. Happens to be the Saturday of school vacation, so hoping that's not too big of an issue for people, but it is how it just fell into place. So that's happening for the girls and then there's the boys and their special lady guest. The event is still being planned out, but it's leaning towards like an outdoor event at the complex on like a Friday night. So it's exciting to be able to bring these activities back to the kids.
Yeah, did you get support and help and do you still need people? What do you, I know you put out a big plea.
I think, once the events are like, well, actually the volunteer signups have started to go out. There's been like mid-sized committees.
Okay, good.
I think everyone, I think they're decent committee sizes.
Get your Corey's early, people.
Well, it's nice that you're doing both because in the past for, it was every other year for boys and girls, so. I, I think it's nice because they all had nothing for a few years too.
Yeah, so it had to be.
It would be every year.
Something this year.
And that's actually, I mean, I know we joked and said get your Corey, but people probably need to be reminded that Corey, Corey forms, you know, to, to have the background check so that you can get back into the school. When we can get back into the school, you need to talk to the principal or admin assistants at each of those, any of the schools. Cause once you get Corey, you know, your Corey for the district, but you have to do it every three years?
Three years.
Three years.
So since you haven't done it during COVID, I'm pretty sure we're, most of us are up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you don't know until you try to go do something.
And they don't let you in, yeah. So please do.
And then the other event we did was, it really wasn't BPO. I had seen the email, so I just kinda went with it. We did discounted tickets to the Worcester Railers hockey game. It was this past Saturday, there were about 45 people who went from the district.
Nice.
So it was nice and then the guy actually sent me a message saying that they made it to playoffs. So he's gonna extend like a discount to us and he'll send me the information. So again, he's opening to the whole district, it doesn't just, you know, not just the elementary school. So I tried to post it on Facebook a lot and different groups for people for the last ones, I'll do the same with this one. He said there's no minimum of three people come, he doesn't care, like, he's just.
Get the people there.
Yeah, and honestly, I loved it. It was at the DCU, it was just nice and small in there, so it was like, it's not overwhelming. It's an easy in, easy out kind of a venue.
Have the WooSocks offered anything for?
I haven't seen the WooSocks yet. Actually, we are having a raffle with the VME PTO and there are two sets of raffle tickets for WooSocks on there. They're still coming this month.
Nobody else needs to put in for the WooSocks tickets.
Yeah, don't bet on that one. Although last night, I finally, it was my turn to draw the winner, so there's a whole process, I'm going through it and I get to, no one bid on the prize last night. I'm like, oh, I got all the way through the program and, and I get to pick a winner. There's a Yankee candle that we'll probably give as a gift at the end of next Christmas.
There you go.
And I just wanna thank Tara for all of her work in helping us get the District of One event rolling forward.
Yes.
You and Sarah Tasker and, and the other parents that are involved have been awesome. So save the date, May 15th. We're gonna send out, Pam Maloney's working on the flyer for us. She's amazing, so she'll put together that visual and we've got the police on board and I, a bunch of other team members. So it is one to four on Sunday, May 15th at the high school. Lots more information to come, but thank you Tara so much for helping with that.
Thanks for getting that ball rolling and happy to purchase feet.
You guys are a force.
Tara's had a lot of experience.
In 10 minutes, they had the whole thing planned out, I'm like.
And so I think I signed up to join the middle school PTO while I was there, I'm not really sure.
But you guys are awesome, thank you.
Pendant for next year.
It's all good. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just waiting, buying time for our special guest here tonight. I just wanna say a few words about our chair and her time here. I will try to do it without stuttering or crying. Jane has sat with us for eight years, that's two full terms. And until you serve in this capacity, you, you just don't know the depth of the work that goes into serving our schools, our communities and typically putting all of your time into the nights at public meetings instead of at home with your family. And it's, it's time you don't get back. A lot changes in one term, not, never mind two. I think, I think if you think back to what life was like eight years ago, what our schools were like eight years ago, there's been so many changes. Your daughter was still in Millville Elementary. She was not a teenager and she was not in high school. You, were you were driving a Lincoln Town Car eight years ago? I do know the sacrifice you've made. You drove that for a very long time.
For a very long time.
The sacrifice you've made and that your family has made, our, our community has benefited, benefited from it, Jane. It, the time is priceless. And unlike the years before Jane served, we can happily say she's worked with two superintendents. No more seven and 11. Jane has successfully helped flatten that curve before we ever knew the terminology of flatten that curve. You strongly navigated four straight years as the chair of our committee. You led countless subcommittees. The most tireless one that comes to mind for me, and it's funny because you mentioned it today, was working with MASC and updating all of our policies that were outdated back to the 70s. And I'm, that is not an exaggeration. You've worked tirelessly with unit negotiations, many years, many units. Throughout the eight years, spent countless nights at town meetings with selectmen. Back to the old folding wooden chairs in the Longfellow Municipal Center. And I do believe those chairs are still stuck in that building, they never let them move them out. Countless FinCom boards and, and those members have changed for our towns, except for Mr. Watson.
But he got his op-ed contribution.
He has, he has been successful. Jane has spoke up on our town floors at both town meetings to the community, even when they weren't going to like the answers. But I believe the biggest sacrifice is the time away from, from family, which must be hundreds of hours sitting in meetings while your teenage child and husband navigated without you. I'm certain they're going to be very happy to have you home. But probably not as big as you will be missed here. The void you're leaving is probably irreplaceable, so please keep in touch. I know I've personally known you as a mom and a friend prior to working with you on this committee. I'm sure our friendship will continue, but I am very sad to see you leave. And I, I personally appreciate all of the time and work sitting with you. And I remember our conversation outside of Millville Elementary when you were deciding to, to do this, so. But your husband, who has joined us here today, maybe for some cake.
We don't usually do these things.
And Melissa, we haven't had cake in a long time, Jane, but you know we used to have cake.
We used to have cake.
We will miss you. Our community doesn't see much dedication like this anymore and the volunteerism has definitely fallen by the wayside. And you are simply irreplaceable. So with that being said, is there a write-in for Jane? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, and thank you all, cause it's a, it is a committee, it is a team effort. And I think the best thing that anybody can say, without tears, is that they left a place better than they found it.
And you certainly have.
We have done that, we have. And thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we do have an executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to the meeting and adjourn the meeting during executive session.
Second.
Amanda?
Yes, oops, sorry, yes.
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 Jesse, thank you. The last time, I'll get my thumbs up.